Hey, good morning. It is Monday, November 15. And the time is 11:03, and we are here for a workshop. The first thing on the agenda is the...
Agenda review.
Agenda review.
Do we have a quorum?
I'm sorry, my... We do not need a quorum. My computer is showing upside down, so it's hard for me to see it. Story of my life. But we're going to start with Dr. Savage.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so the first question we have here is from the B section, Organization of the Board, B3, Approval of the Calendar Establishing Regular School Board Meetings for January 2022 through December 2022. The question is, can this be voted on then adjusted in the future? And so this really is a board-level piece to discuss. This is not a staff-level discussion, so for the board to discuss this question.
Okay, and I'm... I have to look at yours because I can't...
Yeah, please.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, please, of course.
Okay, so this would be Ms. Gittens had brought this to you.
I can't get you call them. She literally is upside down.
Yeah.
There you go, that works. Okay, what are we, on B3?
Yeah, B3.
Okay, let me look at my notes. I think mainly on this one, my question was, we had a discussion, was it Thursday, about turning in, we have to turn in the calendar to DOE or something?
Correct.
And then we can make adjustments?
Correct.
All right, so I just wanted to make sure if we're voting on it in a hard vote tomorrow, if that is just made clear, that this, we're voting on it, but it also says... So I don't know if we can adjust the wording of it? Does that make sense to anybody? Okay.
Okay, so when we had this conversation regarding the calendar, I know that Ms. Schaefer said we had to send it to the state, and then we always have the ability to...
Make adjustments.
Make the adjustments once we... And that was based on the conversation of the possibility of having, if we were to go to one meeting per month?
Yes, and as long as it's noted that that's okay, and... Then I'm fine with that one.
Ready for the next? All right, the next item is under G, Consent for the Board Office, G1, Approval of Board Member Travel to FSBA, FADS, FEEL, Firma, FSBAA, and the 76th Annual Joint Conference. The question is, poll for discussion, vote, question mark? And this, again, is for the board member discussion, this is not a staff question.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
And it's me again. I'm just wondering, can we see how many people are going, or can we do that or no?
It says it.
The names should be...
Everybody is... Oh, okay, I didn't see that, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And based on the new statute, we have to bring this before the board every time.
If it's over a certain amount of dollars.
Over $500, we have to bring it to the board.
Okay, all right.
And Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair, we are now in the H, Consent, Executive Services, H1, Approval to Increase Expenditures for ITN Number N177293RC, Branding. And the question is, why $75,000 increase for eight months? I'll poll, no, not at this time, $56,000 can be used to hire at least two full-time subs to help free up teachers. So our response here is from Ms. Teri Kennedy, our Director of Grants and Program Development, to answer this question.
And I think Ms. Fisher, you had brought that question as well.
Good afternoon. We have the magnet grants that have an allocation towards marketing. So the allocation for marketing this year, we had additional $33,000 for Lehigh Middle, $5,000 for Harns Marsh, $19,000 for James Stevens. And it's part of the magnet grant, that we do marketing to make that as a tractor school. So that was why the increase in the expenditure was because of this additional funding that's requested.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, and I just wanted to ask, what grant was that?
The magnet grant, so the magnet grant has five schools. We have two magnet grants, and that is a requirement in the grant that we do marketing for those schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wait, wait, just in case, Ms. Gittens also had...
Well, no, that's... When I first read it, I'm thinking branding for us, and I wasn't sure of that as well. So if it's for the schools... And which schools did you say again?
So the three, there's five magnet schools, but the three specifically that it was increased for was Lehigh Acres Middle, Harns Marsh, and James Stevens. And then we'll also have expenditures for marketing for the additional South Fort Myers High School as well.
Can you give us just a quick example of how that will be used to help those schools?
I can get that for you, I know one of the things... I'm not sure all of the preparation from priority marketing, but I know there was a billboard that I saw recently, and there's a lot of different things that Teri Kinsey does with the marketing. But I can provide that for you.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
And then could you also, this is something that is mandatory inside this grant that we must do?
Correct, because of it being magnet, the whole purpose is to attract other students, and so there has to be a lot of marketing done.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so actually, this is not coming out of our regular budget, this is coming out of a grant budget.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize too, I want to say, Ms...
I just have one more question. Is that a competitive grant?
Yes, it is. And if you recall, I think there were only eight given in the U.S. on this last one, and we were one of those.
Thank you, great job in getting that.
Thank you.
Also, I have to apologize to say that Ms. Vaughn did let us know that she would be coming in late. She had a prior engagement, that she could not get out, so she will be here, but is running a little bit late. Ms. Patrica? Not sure.
I thought she was going to be on the phone.
Do we have anybody on the phone? So we'll let you... We will determine if she's joining us by phone. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to verify.
Absolutely, no, thank you, Madam Chair. J, Consent Business Services, Item J4, Approval to Increase Expenditures for the Piggyback of Hernando County Schools, ITB Number 223903, Fresh Produce. The question is, why the increase if there is a contract? I thought we had a contract, and it was saving us money. This is a substantial increase. We have our response from Ms. Susan Malley, our Executive Director for Business Services.
Thank you.
Hello, board members. Dr. Savage. So the question about the food, the fresh produce bid, as you know, we have a current crisis with our national supply chain disruption. And we have our fresh produce vendor who is able to obtain some products that our grocer currently cannot obtain. So because one vendor is unable to obtain it, we have the flexibility in our contracts to go to the vendor who can obtain those products and purchase them from them. Any further questions?
No, thank you.
And thank you for sharing that, because being in the food and beverage industry, we are definitely seeing the issues with product. Well, it's not just food and beverage, it's everywhere.
It's everywhere. So the other thing I would wanted to add is that we can anticipate that we're going to have additional price increases and additional changes to contracts. So we need to remain agile and flexible in working with our partners. When one can't get it and another can, we, you know, the way that we position our contracts really bodes well for us to be able to continue to provide healthy meals for our students.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, just to make sure I understand, so if we have a vendor to get vegetables and fruits, and they can't get certain things, we've already contracted with them, and is this how it works, that there's a contract for a certain amount? Or is there, are they paid by, you know, what they can acquire? In other words, you've already contracted with this one to spend a million dollars, but they can only get you 90, you know, worth of goods? How does that work, and how is it adjusted for the other company? Does that make sense?
Yep, that's a good question. So overarching for our school meals for our students, we have half a dozen or so bids. So we have our grocer, we have fresh produce, bread, milk, et cetera. So we have, we bring to the board a request for estimated expenditures based on prior years and the products that we're able to obtain and serve. And then, so those are all pretty high-dollar contracts. So for example, our grocer was unable to get Gogurts, and our milk vendor was able to get that. So in general, let's say we have multiple contracts for a couple of million dollars, then that is an umbrella contract with specific items, with the flexibility to also purchase additional products. So we took our Gogurt that we couldn't get from our grocer, and we put it on our milk bid. Similarly, cupped fruits, that, you know, you might think of them as applesauce or mandarin oranges, right? Our grocer was unable to provide that, so our fresh produce vendor is. So by having this structure of multiple high-dollar bids that aren't specific down to the penny of exactly what can be purchased, gives us the agility to respond to market conditions. But what we are seeing, usually we can do that without having to bring it back to the board, but given our market conditions, the increase in pricings and the volume of products we're shifting, we're having to bring back to the board those vendors that are able to make it happen, an additional increase in cost to their contracts.
I think where the confusion with me, thank you for that, that the confusion was between expenditure versus contract. And you're saying that it's flexible between the two? Because in other words, if I have the million-dollar contract, but I can't give you $10,000 worth of certain vegetables, I'm only paid by expenditure?
That is correct. So the board authorizes us to expend up to a certain limit, and when we see that one vendor can't provide and another can, we have to bring back to the board and ask for that increased expenditure to stay within the board-approved action.
Thank you very much.
And I think that it is, I know Ms. Gittens, you always speak about making it so that everybody can understand that, like, in the world of the rest of hospitality and all of that, you often do have multiple vendors, because just as what you said, the Gogurts. If you cannot get that from one vendor source, you have the other. So if we have a top of, this is how much we can spend, we have up until that point that they can spend without coming back here. However, we still have the opportunity, because we have XYZ vendors that can supply us with our needs. So that's always a good thing to have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Malley, thank you for remaining agile and staying right where you are, because the next question happens to be for you as well. J5, Approval to Increase Expenditures for ITB Number B207395JC, Clinic Supplies for District Warehouse Operations. The questions are, this is a large warehouse increase, what is going on in the warehouse? I've had a lot of art teachers contacting me, advising me that their ceramics program is not going to be financially possible. The warehouse is not purchasing the clay any longer. They used to purchase it by the bulk, and they are not going to purchase it, which has left schools to individually purchase it, which over $300 increase, they cannot afford it for their arts programs. Please tell me why we can increase a contract amount, $200,000, yet we cut out a clay purchase altogether, which affects all art programs across the district? And the second question on the same item was, what is the effect of COVID funds on these expenses? So Ms. Malley?
Great questions. It goes back again to the national disruption to the supply chain, where every area of purchased goods is being affected. This is compounded by the COVID pandemic. So for example, we need more masks and personal protective equipment. So one example of why there's an increased need on the clinic supplies contract is that we have recently agreed to purchase N95 masks for all of our bus drivers. So in our schools, and as you have many of the disposable masks that the majority of school district staff use are the disposable masks that I see being worn today. The N95 mask, which is a commitment we made, we're going to need to buy a larger volume of that. In addition, similarly, we have multiple contracts with multiple vendors, as I described with food. And we've identified the supplier on this contract has lower prices on masks, and so therefore, we are moving that purchase underneath of this contract, increasing the expenditure so that we can get a better price and with an on-bid vendor to procure our PPE supplies. So in addition to that, you asked about art supplies, and that was a very good question. So we have made a strategic decision as we are managing our particular food product concerns that we have with obtaining foods. We have, there is a team of people who has been diligently pursuing resolution to continuing to obtain and serve healthy meals for our children. So one of the things that we have done, because we are seeing the shortage in labor for driving trucks, we've seen vendors who can deliver to a central location but not to our schools, we've made the strategic decision to clear out two aisles in our warehouse and use that space for storage of food items that we can then transport to our schools and obtain to the vendors. So the food items are very high-utilized products. When we assessed how we could do this, we identified clay and art supplies that are stored in the warehouse as a commodity that can be direct-ordered and shipped directly to schools, so the schools have the flexibility to do that. It will be at a higher price, because we're not buying the bulk clay, right? But the fast turnover of the food items will better utilize the space and have a greater cost-effective performance for the district than storing and distributing clay for art projects, because the food is used every single day, whereas the clay is a less-in-demand product.
Ms. Gittens, and then I'll go to Ms. Javonelli.
Okay, so my question was about the effect of COVID, and all the things that you said in some way were because of the pandemic, that, you know, prices increased and all of that. And I don't know if this is a Ms. Kennedy or Grant question, but can we not use some of those grant funds for some of this because the cause is, you know, we're in this position because of COVID?
Absolutely, we are tracking those directly COVID-related items, so PPE items that are used for pandemic are purchased internally. We are tracking those purchases with an object code that would relate, or a fund or a project that would relate specifically to COVID. And our budget department's doing a great job of staying on top of all the different things and all the different areas where we are spending funds for COVID. And we will be sure to track that and attach that to the appropriate funding source so that we can get funding where it's available.
And we can get it back. And I guess I would just say, on behalf of the board, if there are, you know, restrictions on some of that money that we could get back, that I don't know if we as a board could do anything to help with that, to say, you know, there's a restriction, we can't use it for this, but it should be. So anyway, it's just something to...
I'm certain that budget's going to be preparing, and they have a very keen eye to where we can use the least restrictive sources first, right? And so, or the most restrictive sources first. So finding grant funds and where they can be applied, or special funding for COVID-related purchases is a high-priority task for our budget department.
And maybe it's something that the legislators need to look at. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli, and then Ms. Fisher.
So, thank you. So the M95 mask, when will the bus drivers receive those?
They have...
They have them?
They're there.
Okay, good. That's awesome, so thank you for that. So this actually isn't a conversation for you.
Am I, I'm sorry, am I correct on that?
I think it was a specific type of N95K, N95, I think is the one that they already have in possession there.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was correct when I said that.
Yeah, because I didn't know. But back to, this actually has to do with the conversation that we need to have here regarding the clay and the storage issue. The schools are telling me they can't afford to pay, it's like, it's a huge $300 increase. They're paying like $125 when they get it by the bulk. So it's a storage issue. I mean, they're telling me that their ceramic programs, this will be non-existent. They can't afford to do this. So what do we do? I mean, they're telling me that this won't happen. And I mean, my daughter wasn't very artsy, but she took her for four years at Fort Myers High, and we had to throw away her clay, but that's beside the point. But seriously, we have to, I'm very concerned over this. And the art teachers are just distraught, honestly. So what can we do as a district? I mean, can I store clay in my office? I don't, seriously.
Well, I just want to give Ms. Malley a chance to add any further clarity to that piece of it. Otherwise, we can continue to take this work off, follow up directly with our, the folks who are liaison through our academic services with that side of it, and see what we can come up with. But did you have anything else to offer, Ms. Malley?
Sure, I do. A couple of years ago, we had a Green Belt project that analyzed our warehouse storage and utilization. And we had a multi-year plan to optimize the contents of that. And we had identified the two top areas to reduce storage in the warehouse was office supplies and art supplies. So if you think back 10 years ago, when people wanted to buy binders and pencils and copy paper, Office Depot wasn't delivering directly to schools, and Amazon Prime didn't exist. So now the district has an Amazon Prime account, and so the shipping costs are, it's a single account for the district to assist the schools by paying for that Amazon Prime distribution cost, and then also vetting bids that where vendors will deliver directly to schools. With the shortage of transportation drivers nationally, we are going to have to make some choices as to what are our highest priority areas where we can flex. So we're going to see huge price increases on all products, and we've identified the top areas to optimize. We had already streamlined, and office supplies were removed from the warehouse. And when we made the decision to go with art supplies streamlining, what we did is we took an inventory of everything we had, we notified all schools, and gave them three to five weeks to look at their upcoming products, projects, and obtain all of the stock that was in the warehouse. So we're going to flush that out to the schools. So hopefully, for the current year, many schools received the product that is stocked currently. And as it's depleted in the warehouse stock, instead of refurbishing or replenishing that stock, we'll go ahead and have the schools purchase. And yes, it would be at a higher price, and yes, it would be direct shipped. The other thing that's kind of hidden here is the cost. So if you think about huge boxes of clay, right? And our staff receiving them, inventorying them, putting them away, doing the stock, when an order comes, fulfilling the order, putting it in the truck. So there's that cost of labor management, of warehousing of products that is added to... So the schools might not be realizing the full cost, because there's a cost savings. They're not paying the higher price, they're not paying for the labor. So in a way, it's moving the costs around a little bit. Certainly, everything's increasing in price, and we're going to have to manage price increases all the way around. This was a strategically-planned initiative to focus on our highest volumes of food, where we cannot get service directly to schools, that is, food items. And so we have made a strategic decision to focus the delivery of food for healthy meals for students to be a higher priority than art supplies. And that's not saying that that decision doesn't need to be revisited, or something else needs to happen, but at this moment in time, and that's where we are.
But if I'm understanding correctly, though, Ms. Malley, it still does not diminish the ability for schools to obtain what they need, it's just a different method. They wouldn't be getting it through the warehouse directly, they'd be, it would be an increased cost, which again, we, financially, from a district perspective, we are able to work directly with our schools. If we're hearing that there's a financial shortfall with the amount that they had budgeted, because in the past, they would receive this at a cheaper rate through our district warehouse, being reimbursed strictly from a supply standpoint, now that there's supply and delivery and potential escalation on that side, that's something that we would continue to work with them. What we're not saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're not saying is, no more ceramics. We're just saying it's going to have to occur on a more on-demand standpoint, not where you'll be stockpiling huge volumes of clay at your school site or here, but that'll be more scheduled, potentially with the unit, you know, going through Amazon or whatever, the Prime shipping account that you mentioned. Is that correct?
You're correct, Dr. Savage, thank you for that.
Ms. Javonelli?
So, but the budget, but the clay purchase would come out of the school's budget, right? Comes out of their budget, not a general...
My understanding is that it always came out of their budgets, but we can continue to add and enhance that budget if, because all that is done based on a longitudinal trend of saying, here's how much they really need, they budget accordingly. Because we're shifting things around, it's really just about the cost movement. The cost of this is being shifted around, and we as a district can help support them through that effort.
Okay, so you're going to tell me, you're telling me that you're going to increase their budget to accommodate the difference in the clay? Because, I mean, that is, because it really, a budget is what they budgeted for, they planned on. So now their budget's going to increase, because the price of the clay is going to increase. And it's up to that principle to decide, well, we're going to have ceramics or not. No, we're not going to school, because it costs too much, you know, do something else. But, I mean, some of these departments have huge clay, I mean, the, you know, the kilns, I mean, it's a whole ceramics class. I mean, it's not just, you know, art.
Yeah, and some of our courses, for example, are an entire ceramics course. That's the entirety of that course. So clearly, I guess my wondering is, from a strategic planning standpoint, what does the engagement look like with those individual schools to... does the engagement look like with those individual schools to, to assist them, knowing that this is a major shift? Where it's necessitated really by a district-wide focus of prioritization on foods. But that doesn't mean we want to diminish those programs. So just, Ms. Malley, could you just mention how, what does that process look like for schools to get the additional assistance they need? Whether it's through requesting additional funds to cover the cost of that clay? Or could you maybe just highlight that piece as well?
Certainly. Our budget department works very closely with schools on a very regular basis, reviewing their budgets, looking at everything that impacts it. And this is yet another impact. And it's, you know, there, it's not the only impacted area. And as a whole, the budget department will work with schools and identify those programs that want to continue their ceramics programs. And probably we're looking into next year since, you know, we, we had the stock that was distributed through the schools. So it may be an impact for next year's budget. There may be some schools that have an impact on this year's budget. And those schools can work directly with our budget department to determine if there's something that can be done to make sure that those programs continue to operate.
Thank you. And I'm going to have Ms. Fisher ask a question real quick.
So, okay, so I just have a couple of questions. And with the, the warehouse and the storage, so I was over at 2097 Central Avenue, and I understand that building is being rented by United Way for the Community Impact Center, but that a portion of it is held for our...
Can you talk into the mic?
That's okay. You can turn your back to me, Ms. Fisher. I understand.
Okay. So when I was in that, a portion of that building is still being held by the district for storage. So I was looking, taking a tour and looking at potential placement of the different departments of the Community Impact Center. And there were rows and rows and rows of boxes of masks. I don't know what kind they were. But why are they in the warehouse and not being distributed to our employees and schools?
So we, we have received many masks from many sources. And we tend to not turn them away. But there are specific masks that are not so much preferred in the schools. And many of those have been donated to us. So what we sometimes do is make sure that when a different mask is ordered, we couple that with some of the masks that are under ordered. And it is a, you know, an individual preference to choose, you know, to use or to not use that kind of mask. So another thing to know about donations, which the masks at Central or that if they're not located in our, our main warehouse, we need to have an inventory system of what's coming in and what's going out. So if donated items are received, they are typically not commingled with those products that are in our inventory. Because that could really result in challenges and mixing up things, lot, lot, confusion on which products are donated versus which aren't. So we have a thoughtful system on how we manage those items that we purchase and those items that are donated. And that is why those products are, that were donated are not located at our main warehouse. Does that answer your question, Ms. Fisher?
No, not yet. So, so I observed a lot of other items that are really, look to me like they're not usable, but I'm not the determiner of that. But I'd like to see if we could have that looked at, to make sure that, that space is being used for necessary items.
Okay.
Then, then the other question that I had regarding the grants and, and helping pay for different things, I, I'd like to see from Ms. Kennedy's department, a, a list of potential opportunities for some competitive grants from our, our grants experts and specialists who are in that department. Because I, I had a conversation with a community member, and they were saying there's so much available money out there that we could be taken advantage of. And I just want to make sure that we are in fact doing that. And they, these people were willing to provide some sources that are looking to help school districts. So that would be my other comment on that.
Is that a follow-up item or would you like Ms. Kennedy to address that now?
If the board agrees, maybe Dr. Savage could...
Yeah, Ms. Kennedy's sitting right here. We just made eye contact and she's more than happy to assist in, in any way that we can here. In terms of if there's a person to connect to or if we just would like to see what we're already looking at, we're happy to continue this work. This is pretty important.
Well, and, and I don't, you know, I'm, I, I don't know exactly what the process is for identifying those grants that could potentially help us with some of these problems.
Ms. Malley, I think that Ms. Javonelli's going to have one more question for you as well. Am I correct?
No, I mean, I understand there's, I was going to talk about that. No, it's fine.
Just to answer briefly, we do have a process where Kathleen Kett does look at what grant opportunities there are each week. And when she does see something that we would qualify for, we do notify that department. And we were taking that to Cabinet and, and plan on doing that as well. We've been very busy with Esser over the last year, but we are absolutely looking for specifically the Community Schools Grant to come back around. We did just apply with United Way for the 75,000 planning grant, the same thing that we did with Franklin Park. We just applied for that for Fort Myers Middle, and we did receive that. We were noticed last week. But we are also looking for some competitive grants related to technical colleges. But, so we do have a process where we are looking, but if you see something, forward it our way because we will definitely take a look, see what we can do.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Javonelli, I want to go...
So just back to my concern, I understand in, in the situation regarding the shortage and, and so forth, I mean, and the space. But my concern is that, you know, the increase to the schools and the budget, you know, and making sure that principals don't eliminate the position because they can't afford it. I mean, you know, gas has increased, but we're not going to stop our buses and only go three days a week because we can't afford the gas. So we have to make, we have to accommodate. We have to make sure that the schools, you know, are, the opportunity is still there. I just, that's my concern. And, and I'm, and it, and it goes right down to the principal, you know? And they've already had, you know, there's a reason for a budget. So now they're, if they're going to have to go outside their budget, they're not going to do it. I mean, and I understand. So my, that's my concern.
Well, that's, that's a great concern. I think there's, sometimes it can be a misinterpretation. People think of the budget as an annual activity and that's really what it is. But the reality is the budget is a dynamic process. It's, you have your budget set and then literally the next, very next day, there's already adjustments being made. So I, I think in the case of the schools, a lot of times they are used to kind of having that annual activity, but they are able to reach out to their budget analysts throughout the year. And I think specifically in a time of supply shortage issues and having to shift costs from one area to the next, we as a district are more than happy to assist. And so I would say, you know, when I, I checked with our business services folks, they had not heard from any schools about the clay situation yet. But if, if you're aware, if something comes across for any of you as board members, were you here, where it sounds like a programmatic offering is going to have to be limited in any way, I encourage you to tell that person to work directly with their, their budget analysts, their, their folks in business services to ensure that they've highlighted that to their concern because they simply just may not be aware. And I, you know, I forget, a lot of times our school principals, they're focused on teaching and learning, you know, from a business standpoint. Our folks are here to help. That's what they do every day. So please just tell them to reach out to, to those to, for help.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Savage, we are...
Yep. K, yes, Madam Chair, we're in the K consent area, human resources, K1, approval of personnel recommendations general. The question is, I see that we lost 15 employees in transportation. What are we doing to assist in that department? Any incentives to keep them and show them that we need them? We have Mr. Dotig here from HR.
Good morning, everyone. The simple answer is we're trying to recruit more bus drivers that will help them. We had a recruitment event this past week for food service and transportation, and we had 80 individuals attend, which we consider in this current market, pretty good. I can't tell you right now, that was only Thursday night, so I can't tell you, or Wednesday night. I can't tell you right now how many are now going to be employed, but that, I will get that number for you. So that's the first thing. Regarding incentives, as you all know, and thank you for approving the MOUs, one of the MOUs includes $1,000 for individuals that did not receive the disaster relief payment from the governor. And that will be distributed December 15th. And the key to that incentive is people have to be employed on that date. So if anybody's thinking about leaving, certainly they may want to reconsider and at least stay until that incentive. Moving forward, I will tell you that, as you know, we're in bargaining. And incentives in the Spalk arena are certainly something that I believe both parties are interested in around certain items. And I really don't want to be more specific than that in a public meeting. Any questions?
Nope, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
So when I looked at Ms. Javonelli's question, and I, my question is a little bit different. We have a lot of good strategies for recruiting, but I'm wondering about what we're doing in retention. And this is an item that I had put on a list for Dr. Savage for our one-on-ones because after listening to the video of the bus drivers meeting and hearing comments from people, I, I don't think it's about incentives as much as work environment and communication among the supervisors and the bus drivers.
Yeah, I, I echo that, just to allow Rob to, to share some as well. But, you know, it's not just recruitment, absolutely retention is, is vital. And I think right now, one of the challenges I've given the entire cabinet is, we're going to have to think differently. Some of our, I mean, we have staffing issues really across the board in almost every aspect of the organization. And it's not unlike other school districts, especially large districts all across the country. There are staffing shortfalls pretty significantly. It's a much more competitive marketplace. And so we may have to approach just the simp, the way we, our way of work as a district. We really have to kind of look at it through new eyes because we may not be able to close it simply by incentivizing. But I think that becomes, retention becomes even more of a vital issue right now, is how do we retain our high, the highest caliber of our workforce to ensure that they feel properly supported, that all the systems we, we have in place are human, supportive of them as a human being. And, and this has been a very difficult time for a lot of people. I think it bears mentioning about the mental health situation. Folks are finding, it's not unique to education, that if they can work from home, if they can, that sometimes they're willing to even take less money in some cases, to enjoy a higher quality of life. So these things we continue to unpack. I mean, this is a real passion area for Mr. Dotig as well. Robert, are you willing to kind of share just a little bit more about what we said?
Well, I can. And I, I think, Ms. Fisher, thank you for the question. I know this is something you've always advocated in retention. We cannot afford, I'll just say this right now, not to be overly dramatic, we cannot afford to lose one employee right now because we cannot replace them. So we have to take care of our employees. And there is a process for doing that in collective bargaining, but otherwise, we need to take care of them also. And I think Dr. Savage hit on the mental health side of things and supporting employees and allowing them, if they need a day off, to have a day off, something as simple as that. Teachers, we've had this function in Cabinet of taking things off of folks' plates, thanks to Dr. Savage. And some of us have done that. A lot of us have done that in our divisions and departments. We are not having class walkthroughs. That's one thing HR has done this year to alleviate the pressure of those and from the administrators, so teachers don't have that. But certainly, the one thing that has stared me in the face in the two months I've been here is the amount of people leaving and the lack of people that we're hiring. So we need to obviously focus on that. We are focused on it. It's just, there are not easy answers to those questions in this workplace and in this search, this economy that we have right now in the, the United States. So, but it is a passion and we have to do more. There's no doubt about that.
Thank you. I'll call you one more. Can I ask a question? You said that you all step in to relieve some of the teachers. Are the supervisors and directors for transportation, are they able to jump on a bus and drive a bus to take, take a route? And the reason I'm asking this because I know that that's very stressful when...
Yeah.
We are adding 21 more stops to a, a bus who has, already has another one. And then these kids, seven-year-old little ones are getting home seven o'clock at night, three hours later from when they get on the bus.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we have the capability...
I, I would be remiss in answering that, but I know most of our supervisors were drivers, so they more than likely have CDLs. I don't know about staff above them.
Yeah, I was just curious because how you jump in for, you know, teachers or staff.
Sure.
Because I know even in Ms. Davis's little pod there, we have a person who can actually jump on a bus and drive.
Mm-hmm.
She's got her license, too.
Right.
You know, avoid, just to have it.
Sure.
So I'm just thinking maybe that's something that we need to look at, too. If I could drive it, I would be there, and I'm sure everyone here would do it better than not. Ms. Kittens?
No, I, no, I wouldn't. Anyway, okay, two questions. On, on our HR list, the transfer and the transfer change of assignment. Under transfer is that, as I'm looking through it, is it like teacher, teacher? Because I'm looking at someone going from early childhood, but further down the list, someone else is moving from a school to early childhood. And I'm gathering that they are covering that position. So the, the question that comes up, and I've had teachers call me about, they have been cleared, in a sense, to go to a different school. And for whatever reason, they really, really want to leave and go to another school. And they are being held until that homeschool gets someone else.
Fills the, fills the position, right.
That they can't move. I, I get it.
Yeah.
I understand that. However, just like you said, every single position is so critical right now. And if you have an unhappy employee that's trying to get out and you're saying no, and December comes and they don't come back, you have an issue. Can you address that? And then I have one more thing.
Sure, I can. Both collective bargaining agreements include language regarding transfers. There's only certain periods of time people can voluntarily transfer. Absent that, like right now during a school year, there are restrictions on who can and cannot. Regarding teachers, the, both principals have to agree. So what happens is the principal, the releasing principal will typically say, I'm not going to release the person until the position is filled, so as to not have an absence in that classroom. However, I will tell you, both myself and Ms. Harrell have had to intervene recently in situations where the imminent threat was the person was going to leave the district if we did not allow them to transfer. So we are involved in those situations. We've also just negotiated language, or in the process of with Spalk, to address the transfer language. So it makes it the process more accessible to folks. And we are in the process of bringing that issue to Talc also, to try to alleviate this significant situation right now, because it does come up often.
Is that a part of bargaining, therefore we really shouldn't discuss, or no?
Correct. And that would more than likely be an MOU.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other question I have, and I, I brought this up before, the transfer and change of assignment. When I, I, I just get chills anytime I see a teacher moving to a different position. And we have two on this one. And I applaud them for moving up. It is not that at all. It is the times that we are in.
Right.
And when we've got 67 core positions open in one area and one zone, that's a lot. Core, we're talking math, reading, the, the basic core subjects. And even though these may not be the schools...
Right.
...that are involved in that, it's a real concern that you're moving a teacher from, you know, a teaching position to a coach.
Yeah.
I just, it really, really bothers me to see that. And I just feel we need to look at some type of, maybe, I don't know, a freeze or something. I, I don't know. But we cannot afford to lose teachers.
Right. And it, and this, since I've been here two months, it's, I know that the second time, I think you brought it up, or maybe the third, which, so I appreciate that. What I'm going to do is I'll get with academic services to discuss that. I know we have not permitted that to happen in Tier Four schools. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago. But I understand you keep seeing these every two weeks and wondering what's going on. So I'll certainly get with Dr. Spiro and his folks and we can talk about that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I do believe that Board Member Patrica's on the line.
Yes. Ms. Patrica, did you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Welcome. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair, we are now in the M Consent Operations Section. M- Yes, Madam Chair, we are now in the M Consent Operations Section, M, Item M2, Approval to Piggyback Lee County Board of County Commissioners Contract Number CN200224-JJB, Miscellaneous Professional Services. Question is, please explain, and we have a response from Ms. Ebaugh to speak to this miscellaneous piggyback.
This piggyback is for a variety of planning services, planning and development-related services that are necessary as we are, as we prepare for a project, whether it's, or even in evaluating a project or a concern at a school, whether it's something that we need for engineering work, or we need something for due diligence work, for site planning, it's a variety of different services that allow us to prepare for and obtain the necessary information we need to pursue a project, or even determine if we are going to pursue a project on a given site in a different, in a given location.
Is that with you?
And this, it's $56,000, you're saying, so is this a continuous?
Yeah, this is similar to what Ms. Malley mentioned earlier, where we have an amount allocated, and then we will determine based on the need at the time, appropriate time, whether to pursue and who to use from the continuing services, which vendor to use. It's a variety of services and a variety of vendors.
And this is the third year, so is this, it says through '23, so there's one more year to do this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ebaugh, why don't you hang tight for just a couple more here. We have M3, Approval for Expenditure for ITN Number N197367ES, Proximity Student Enrollment District Plan. The question is, the objective is to create a smaller array of community-oriented attended zones that enables families to choose schools closer to their homes during the enrollment process. That's a statement.
And actually, may I speak? I spoke with the superintendent about this, so I will, we had a conversation, and I will continue it later, so I can withdraw this question at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens, and there will be an opportunity in today's presentation that we'll be getting to shortly, to ask some more, if there's anything on that topic. The next item's M4, Approval to Award ITN Number N217403ES Fire Alarm Systems, Maintenance and Repairs. What percentage is paid from the half-cent sales tax? And this is from Ms. Malley.
This particular ITN is not funded by the sales tax.
Um, it was. I guess, with a certain amount coming out of sales tax for maintenance and repairs and security, so this is not considered that.
Right, so we have many, many projects, and we, this was not one that was budgeted to be paid with sales tax, but rather with other dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Savage?
Those were all of our agenda-related questions. Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, Ms. Giovanni, you had, how about M6? You have M6, don't try to, just say it.
Good try.
I must have overlooked it, I apologize, my goodness. Yeah, oh, sorry, there was a little gap in what I was reading here, okay, I'm sorry. Item M6, Approval to Renew ITN Number N187349AT, HVAC Repair Services. The question is, is the item that was pulled last week, I see this is, I see there are more than one vendor on this contract, please advise. Ms. Malley?
Certainly. So this is not the contract that was pulled last week, this contract is for HVAC repairs, and this board agenda is to request to fund the contract that was previously awarded in, I believe, 2019. So I've reviewed the notes from when that contract award occurred a couple of years ago, and the committee had made some of the following decisions, that there were multiple types of HVAC equipment that required services, and different vendors kind of have expertise in different areas, so they selected a group of vendors that could cover all of the different types of equipment that we have. They selected multiple vendors, so that if multiple units required service at the same time, we would have sufficient resources to respond to those requests for service. And additionally, a couple of the vendors were not awarded certain line items, because they're, either the demand for those products was less in the district, or because they had higher prices on those specific line items, so therefore, they were not awarded those, you know, the competitive cost was awarded to the lower-priced vendor.
Ms. Giovanni?
Yeah, that's good, thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
All right, I do believe the last one here is M7, Approval to Increase Expenditures for Contract Number C177288LN Walkway Covers. I see this is an increase to the contract, why the increase, what was added, is this the final year of this contract? Are the funds coming from the half-cent sales tax funds? Why did one school fund it? Why did one school fund it? And this again is Ms. Malley.
Ms. Giovanni?
Do you want to?
First you, and then me. Okay, so this information has been provided from our maintenance department, so the first question was about what was added, and so initially, projects were scheduled for FY22, and in order to complete them, the additional expenditures required to fund all of the projects that we had slated for. The second question is, is this the final year of the contract? And the answer is no, that there's a final renewal period would be May of 2022 through May of 2023, and that would come up for renewal in advance of that, so there is an additional renewal period. The next question was, are the funds coming from the half-cent sales tax? And the response is that the walkways to the portables were covered from the sales tax dollars when they were performed, however, the day-to-day walkway covers are not funded through sales tax. However, Tanglewood and Ray Podorf Walkway Projects are funded with sales tax, so little, a little mix and match of funding with projects. And the final question is, why did one school fund it? So the school-funded project is athletic-based, so the school is paying for it out of their internal funds or other funds. The facility is creating a cool zone area for their athletes, which will include water misters and ice stations to help keep athletes cool, and the walkway cover structure will provide the necessary shade.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. And that concludes the questions for the agenda review, and Madam Chair? Yes, ma'am. I apologize, I forget you were there.
Could you give me a 10-minute warning or lead time, so that I can pull over and refer to my notes as I ask questions?
Okay, we're going to be moving, we're going to be moving into the next section right now, which is Item Two on the agenda.
Well, there's going to be a presentation first, so when you get to the point where you think it's my turn to ask questions and give comments, could just give me a five-minute notice, please?
Thank you, okay, so next on the agenda is our review for Quad AAA Pre-K8 in Astero, and if, when the speakers come up, if they could just please introduce themselves. Do you want to sit up there, Ms. Ebaugh, or? Because you have paperwork. I've got a lot of them.
Okay, well, you got that mic there. Good morning. Dr. Savage and members of the board, we have a presentation for you today on our Quad AAA, or that is, the pre-K proposed building or proposed school in Astero. Dr. Savage, I didn't know whether you wanted to address the board first, related to overview, before we get in, or did you want us to just get in?
I would say, we're a little behind schedule, so feel free to get right into it.
All right, very good then. So we'll hop right into it, as you see, I have several individuals up here with me, I think you know all of them, with the exception of, and Joel, let you introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Joel DeGusman, I'm currently a
So Joel, yes, please use the mic.
Okay.
Is it on?
Yep.
Hear me? My name is Joel DeGusman, I'm a CAD specialist for the Planning Department here at the school district.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Ebaugh to start the conversation, and then after we present all of the information, of course, we are, have a lot of ample time for questions as well, so Ms. Ebaugh?
I think it's, good afternoon now?
Good afternoon. We also have an additional team member via phone, David Kates from Davis Demographics, our demographer is with us virtually.
Thank you.
So we're going to quickly go through, just a quick project history of how we got to where we are, the state approvals that were required that allowed us to build this, then we will get into a discussion of current capacity enrollment. We'll be looking at the data that was presented from the 1920 projections, and show about how market conditions have changed, and we are today in the 2122, and then we'll be discussing three options for discussion. We're not necessarily looking for a decision today, we just want to have an open discussion about which direction we have. We do need a decision at the next meeting in December. So a quick introduction to our, to a little bit of history. This was approved in our plants, in our five-year plant survey in 2017, when they approved an elementary and a middle school in the South Zone for 1,034 student stations for the elementary school, and for 1,345 student stations for the middle school, and it's important to know, to understand the standard by which, at the time this evaluation was completed, of, at the elementary school, at the elementary level, you need an increase of 67 students by grade level, or a total of 400 students K through 5, and at the middle school, you need an additional 100 students by grades level, or a total of 306 through 8. In 2018, this is when the project really started taking shape, we had two separate schools, as approved in the plant survey, the location was determined to be at Block Lane behind Astero High School, we had an initial draft budget estimated of $66.8 million in the capital plan, and then significant actions that we took were to approve the capital budget and to select our three consultants for the project. In 2019, we moved to a unified school of a pre-K8 Quad AAA. It was to be done as a phased construction, with an initial build-out of 1,600 student station, and a final build-out of 2,300 student stations. The location was moved from behind Astero High School to the Three Oaks Parkway site, which we had purchased in the early 2000s for a future school, and the funding estimate in the capital budget had increased to $110 million, some significant actions that we took as a district that year, including moving the school, approving the Phase One for the construction, and starting the Phase One design. So now we want to talk a little bit about the enrollment and capacity, and looking again backwards, as well as forward, in understanding the market conditions, and David?
Yes. Can you hear me over there?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good afternoon.
Thank you for accommodating me today. I can't see the slides, so I'm just the one that starts with the trends. I like to kind of go over these kind of bulleted points here. This is like Kathy mentioned, that I'm kind of giving you the overview, especially what's happened the last few years, since we've come on board and done a lot of deep dive in the demographic data for your county. First of all, this is, the bullets are pretty general, because it's not just your district or your county, this is happening all across country. Cost of homes have really gone up amazingly high in the last year and a half, I think you all kind of know that, I'll be showing you some demonstrations of that. There is definitely a correlation between the cost of homes and the students that are generated from those homes. Typically, the higher the home costs, the less the students, and the lower the cost, the more the students. And vastly here at the, and there's been some changes a lot, and I'm going to demonstrate this in a moment, on homes built within, let's say, five years ago, even 10 years ago, the rates coming out of those units versus ones that are coming out of the homes right now. So we're going to focus on, well, I guess you'd call the Aliko Corkscrew area, if you can move on to that map with the purple areas, is that up on the screen? Yeah, okay, so hopefully you can see this, and what this is, is, I think you know that myself and a colleague were out there about a month ago, late October, we drove all these developments, we spoke with the salespeople, we got information up to date on what the sales costs were on these units as of now, and how many they have sold, and how many are more to be sold. So this is kind of a general overview, I won't go through each project here, but the bulk of these projects were part of the study that Kathy mentioned that the district did a couple of years ago, and we've kind of taken it on a little further now. The key thing I want to really point out here is the cost of these homes now, they're, the low end is in the 400s, but really, most of these are in the 500, 600 range, and even the one you see kind of at the top left there, even the rent, you know, 1,500, almost 2,500 per unit, that's pretty high for your area. So these are moved up quite a bit since the last few years, and if you move on to the next slide, I'll show you an example we did for you. So we have the data directly from your county, we know when the units were built, and more or less what they were sold for, and we could tie that into the student data. We did this last year, so these dots you see are last year's students, we're just now getting started on updating this study, updating, we just are receiving your new students now, and we'll be updating our forecasts in the next few months. But just kind of give you a little overview how this works, if you kind of look at that area that goes down the middle and to the left, when it's tagged for Bellatera, those are units that were built within a 10-year window, mostly in the early, or actually, mid 2000s, 2004 to 14, and they were really selling on average for about $170,000 each. And down there at the bottom, you see what we call our student yield factors, or generation rates, so we break it out by your elementary, middle, and in this case, K8 as well, and you can see that the rate for the K5 was a .183, that just means for every 100 units, you're generating about 18 elementary-age students, that's how you interpret that. So if you move over to the upper-left corner, you see the Preserve at Corkscrew, those were built later, so those are 2012 to 15, not as many units, 440 compared to 1,600 in Bellatera, and those were starting to move up into the mid 200s at that point. So look at the yields coming out of those, the .138 and the .040, those are lower than the one you see in Bellatera, it's already starting to drop. Now you move over to the right side there, the Corkscrew Shores, those are just recently completed within the last year, 640 units, those are now in the up, or they were sold at the time for the upper 300s. So these are still lower than what they're selling now, and look at those yields, out of those, all those units, you're generating only 40 K8 students, very low yields, and from our visits and what we're seeing up in the, those purple areas that were active, you're getting numbers closer to these kind of figures. They're also much higher, like I told you, they're starting in the 400s, but most of the units are being sold are in the 500s to 600s, and some even approaching 7, 8, $900,000 a unit. So I'll pass this on, I think, to Kathy or Joel on the next slide, these slides, and I'll pick it up here at the end.
The South Zone, especially South Zone 2 and 3, we also needed to look at the current capacity and utilization factors of our schools in that area. This map shows the schools that are in South Zone 2, and it was taken and refra- This map shows the schools that are in South Zone 2, and it was taken and refreshed from a memorandum that was taken to the board last year. In South Zone 2, we have six elementary schools with a total capacity for students of 4,905 students. And we currently have an enrollment of 4,831. So we're sitting at about 98% utilization in the elementary schools in South 2. We have three middle schools in South 2 with a total of 3,007 student seats, and we currently have 3,055 enrolled. So on that front, we are overutilized, but by 102%. It's marginal. Not shown on the map are our South Zone 3 schools. And we have Spring Creek Elementary sitting at 84% utilization, significantly below the other schools. Benita Springs Elementary is at 117% utilization. And Benita Springs Middle is at 95% utilization. Next slide. So this slide here breaks it out with the numbers to show what the capacity of these schools is, the brick and mortar schools, as they were originally constructed with no portables, and then where they stand now with the portables that are in place. Also on the left-hand column, it tells you how many portables are at each of these schools, if they have any. And it gives you, if it is a negative number, then that means that the school is overcapacity. And if it's a positive number, those are excess seats at that school. Our total capacity with our October 21 enrollment yields for elementary is 60 excess seats as the school stands right now with portables. And with middle schools, we're only 44 seats overcapacity. This breaks down the utilization rates using the data from the previous slide, and it gives you an overall view at where the schools are sitting. Now, obviously, nobody wants to see a school that's sitting at over 100% capacity or over 100% utilization rate, but with the exception of Three Oaks Elementary, sitting at 121% utilization, these numbers can be considered nominal. And at the same time, you have San Carlos Park Elementary sitting at only 70% utilization. There are almost 300 open seats in that school in South Zone 2. And then we have. It wasn't on there. All right, next slide.
So one thing I want to point out, that this is a comparison of the 2019 projection data to the 2021 projection data. And to a school, then we're only, we're showing S 2 because that's the, these were the schools that we focused on in the memo previous, and because these are the schools that are most closely associated with the site that we're potentially building. But to, to all of these schools, they all have gone down in utilization rate over the last two years. So some of them smaller decrease than others, but some of them very significant decrease. When we look at the enrollment projections that we had two years ago, and again, these, the memo came out in May, but it was based on this, the data from our cycle two or 40-day counts from the 2019, 2020 school year. So when we look at the housing units that we had, that we were focused on in the Corkscrew Corridor, the original housing units planned were 4,800 students over a five-year, five-year projection. The number of students total was 1,400 over a five-year projection, 700, about 700 at the elementary level, about 350 at the middle school level, and about 370 at the high school level. Now David is going to show what our current projections, which, again, we're still working on this work, but we wanted to bring you some preliminary numbers and assessments of what we are looking at today for our projections.
To the next slide.
We have.
And as she mentioned, we're updating everything in the next few months with the latest data. But I did show you that we did drive that development, so we do have at least the most up-to-date information on that development. Alaco Corkscrew Corridor area. And you see at the top there that essentially now, these units are projected to be completed over a 10-year period. They already started in 2019. They're a couple of years in. There's up to another six or seven years. So that's a longer period of time than they had told us or even the staff several years ago. So things have kind of slowed down, so it's a longer phase-out rate, if you will. But the same number of units, you know, that was in that study, but over a longer period of time. Also, the students down there, these are estimates just for these projects. So this does not include everything that's all the other students, just generated from these projects we're talking about here on the slide. We're looking at overall, the numbers you see there, 632, that's K 12. If you look at it just K 8 in relation to this potential site, we're looking at about 450 total overall. And that's about 800 less than was in that study from a couple of years ago. And again, longer, it's about four years longer spreading it out. On the right side there is a screen capture out of our study from last year, and these were our estimates on what was in Zone 2 and Zone 3 at the time, and what we were projecting out over a 10-year period. So we weren't showing really much growth even in our study from a year ago. Again, we are updating this now, so there were probably January before we get updated numbers, but this is the best, most up-to-date data we have at the time of what we're looking at in those two combined areas. And I'll move it on to the next presenter.
Information that you see now, we have some capacity options to present to you. As we had discussed when we were putting together our capital plan for this year, we had said that because of the environment of everything, cost escalations and changing environment, that before we got to Phase 2 of a project, we would bring that information to the board for update and then a go or no-go decision. So as we said we would do, here we are presenting that information and then asking for some consideration and decision related to Phase 2 of this particular project. And so with option 1, as you see here, the option would be to continue to construct Quadruple A. And we put in some strengths and then some considerations related to this particular option. First of all, if we do continue to construct Quadruple A, obviously that'll give, that will give the district the ability to be able to provide, you know, sufficient capacity for all students and for a long period of time. As you saw within the numbers that were presented, we're talking through 2028. There was not a large population growth there, so we anticipate that that would meet very long-term capacity needs and demands should we move forward. At the same time, some considerations related to that are the current student capacity in the South Zone doesn't necessitate this large of an increase in student stations based on the projections that you just saw and that David just talked us through. And in addition, the current construction costs do exceed the project, the projected budget due to the increases in material and labor costs. As you know, we had it budgeted, we had this particular project budgeted in this year's capital plan for $84 million. You have the updated project cost estimate within your packet, which tops over $93 million. And I would ask whether Mr. Rickinbacher had anything to add to that discussion related to option 1?
Right now, based on the numbers, construction was made aware of the decrease in the population this October 11th of 2021, as you're aware. We don't do the numbers, we just do the build. And with a limited projection in enrollment, the only factors that I might suggest to look at is how many students in these two zones currently are in portables. The, we have a need to, at some point in time, create a staging school for Cypress Lake Middle. That school is being pushed somewhat. We don't have the acreage for 55-plus portables, so you could potentially, if you chose to, utilize this build now as a staging school to house the Cypress Middle, Cypress Lake Middle students for two or three years while we rebuild Cypress Middle, saving possible portable costs. But that only works, and again, I don't do the numbers, is if you currently have 400 or 500 kids in portables right now in S 2 and S 3, and you project in the next four, four or five years, another 400 or 500, you might have 1,000 kids that would fill an 1,800 school and have that excess capacity. But if you don't have those students coming in, then, then no, I wouldn't suggest that this be built.
And then, Dr. Savvage, if during this or afterwards, if Mr. Rickinbacher would explain the difference, so for clarification, construction cost versus total construction cost?
Sure.
Just some time before this is over, so people understand what the figures you gave first and what the total is.
Sure.
Just some time.
Okay, as you guys are aware, when we decided as a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 process, that the board had asked us to engage after the Benita Springs Project High School, we come to you at station markers, 30% schematic design, 60% design development, and obviously 100% being GMP. So every one of my monthly capital updates, the numbers that I give you are construction cost only. Again, construction cost only, not total project cost. You only get a total project cost when I bring the GMP forward to you, and on this particular project, we're hoping to have it to you for December 7th, should you continue to move forward. Every station marker so far, the original schematic design estimate from our construction management firm, at 30% for this particular project was $68.8 million. Again, not total project cost, no FFNE, other, other dollar sources in there, strictly construction cost. When we got to design development, which is 60% drawings, the estimate went to $74.1 million. That equates to a 7% increase just from the schematic until the design development. And obviously, at 100%, the GMP now is $79.8 million. That represents from our initial schematic design before the COVID inflation factors hit, from 68.8 to 79.8 was a 14% inflation factor due to the market and COVID-related. So when we talk about the $84 million project budget, yes, we, it's a total project cost estimate, but not the official estimate. This is a number that we have to put together in order to negotiate our fees for our, our design team, our construction management, and our billing official. We have to have something to budget and to negotiate with. That was done much prior to COVID actually having any inflation factors. So obviously, when you take $84 million and you tag on 14-plus percent, it's actually more than $93 million, but you can see how we got to where we're going. Now to give you an idea on this school, I want you to be aware, the construction manager has anticipated an inflation factor should you decide to push this school a year. And if we go one year, if it's a 10% inflation factor from now, from a year from now, you're looking at about $8 million. If we realize a full 15%, you're looking at an additional $12 million. So let's just assume, we own these drawings now. The district has paid for the drawings. We own pre-K at Astero. If you were choosing to utilize this design in another zone of need, obviously, we could pull the drawings out, we start our process for permitting, but even if we were able to get going, you're looking at another potentially $12 million on top of $93 million to build the same facility. So I have a need, if it is your desire to move forward with this job, I have to have it approved by December 7th, so the superintendent can execute the contracts for December 8th of this year. Otherwise, I'll automatically push this school one full year should you decide to go. The project has already held, I was supposed to come to you last month, but because of the recent number since October 11th, since we noticed a decrease in numbers, they've asked me to push back. So again, I'm just saying, if it's your desire to move forward with this, I have to have a board approval on December 7th.
Thank you. I just wanted you to explain that, so that way, regardless if it's this school, the next school, or whatever, when you give us one price, it's, it's beginning, not the end.
Yes, every estimate is construction cost.
Thank you.
It is not total product.
Thank you. I just wanted that to be cleared.
Okay, all right. And as Mr. Rickinbacher mentioned, we have here the original timeline for the project when it was targeted to open in August of '23. As Scott mentioned, we would need to, if we were to move forward on this timeline, then that GMP or that guaranteed maximum price would need to be approved no later than in December of 2021 to keep us on timeline for this. In addition, some of the budget considerations, and I'll, I'll bring you back to this slide here where we talked about strengths and considerations. We do have, and I think it's important to point out, that here, where we talk here about could possibly constraining the district's fiscal ability to provide additional student stations or additional projects elsewhere, right? So when I say that, that is, this is one project out of many that we have in the capital plan, as you all are aware of. Costs are escalating on this project, and if, you know, the trend keeps repeating itself, then costs will be escalating on basically every project that we have out there, which is why we talked about the go or no-go decision. So as costs escalate, given no other changes, right, and I'm not sure we're not estimating at this point in time huge shifts or changes in revenue and only escalating costs, that means there has to be then some decisions that would be made about what we can continue to do or maybe not continue to do in the plan based on escalating costs in this project and many others, not just construction, but including our maintenance and technology areas as well. So then we go to option 2, because the question then would be, if the board determines not to move forward with this project, then what can we or would we do in terms of, you know, meeting the need of student stations that we may need anywhere within the near future in the area? And when I say near future, I mean the next five to 10 years based on the estimates that David just shared with us related to the growth, the student growth in this area. So the, one option for this would be portables and campus utilization. In other words, we could provide additional temporary portable student stations on existing campuses and maximize the use of our current campuses. As you heard in the discussion, there were two schools in the area, elementary schools, that right now are underutilized in terms of space and seats. And this really would be a temporary solution. This isn't meant to be a permanent solution. So this would be a, really a delay in the project at this point. And when we say delay, really based on the numbers that we're giving, that we have here that we went over, it really would be more than just a one-year delay. It would more likely be at least five years based on the student growth rate that we're now seeing or now projecting in the area. And I'll ask Ms. Eba if she had anything that she wanted to add in terms of this option.
So the important thing to understand about this delay is that we now have all the entitlements we need to pursue this school when we need it. So this delay gives us the opportunity, like we do every year, which David alluded to. Every year, David does an analysis for us of our existing capacities and our needed capacities and updates our projections, because projections are always changing. That's the nature of the market influence. So if there was something to happen that, you know, we had a market correction and prices went back down to the time period that he talked about where his homes were in the 200s, you may see an increase in number of students that are in this area. So we would continue to monitor and evaluate on an as-needed basis until we reach the point where we were ready to build this campus. And at that point, because we have all of our entitlements done, because the planning is already done, because the design is already complete, we're ready to move forward. So that, I think that's just an important consideration to understand. We're not saying, this option does not say no to this campus. It says, let's wait and see and build it at the appropriate time when the capacity demonstrates a need for the campus.
Related to, because probably a follow-up question to that would be, okay, well, if we don't move forward, we've done some things out here at this campus already, what happens to those costs that we've incurred? So so far, as far as expenses or expenditures that have actually been incurred, that is that the check has been cut, it's been a little over $3 million. And we have most of that related to architect fees, and then some others related to some... and then some others related to some other types of construction services. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Rickinbacher to get into those just a little bit, and then explain how those costs or, or those services that we receive for those costs could potentially carry over and benefit us in the future.
Okay, currently, the three legs of the triangle in the phase one are the architectural design team, the construction manager, and our building official. Currently, we're only obligated for phase one costs for Suffolk Construction, which was $187,500. Now, as you remember, over the summer, we wanted, in order to keep on schedule to have a 23 opening, we increased them by $4 million to do an early structural steel buy. We have just completed the shop drawing phase of that. We have not alerted the manufacturer, because we don't want to get pulled out of a production line from fear. So once your determination is made as to whether this school moves forward or not, I will contact that vendor, if it's your desire to cancel this or postpone it, to try and retrieve as much of that $4 million back that we can by canceling the contract, if that is the way you go. Now, we're already obligated for their design, their sub, sub shop drawing designs and so forth. So I can't tell you at this moment in time how much of the $4 million would come back. That will be a discussion I can have, once your direction is made to my staff.
Stephen Alley?
The $4 million that you're talking about right now, that's not including the $6 million that we spent on Block Lane, right?
The $6 million that's spent on Block Lane, my understanding was $4 million for the property purchases.
But we had architect fees there as well.
No, the architect fees, and let me get to the architect, Harvard Jolly, when we initially engaged with them. Right now, you have an outstanding balance owed Harvard Jolly of a rough, just hold, my numbers are fairly close to Amy's, so don't hold me to the exact penny. But right now, we have a balance owed to them of $3,073,275. Their phase two portion, which is the oversight of the physical construction as an architect, the value in their contract is $1,024,425. So their entire contract, provide drawings and construction oversight, is $4,097,700.
So that's the, that's the total for now?
That's in phase one.
Includes Block Lane, all the work they did there.
Ma'am, they, there was very little work, non-chargeable work on Block Lane. We started when it was two schools. We basically took two prototypes, melded them together into one pre-K facility. So their, their contract right now is for $4,097,700. And if you choose to put the brakes on the project today, then obviously, we would not be paying them the $1,024,425 for the, the phase two portion, which is the engagement of construction oversight. However, you would own those drawings for future use, and you would be required to pay the $1 million if you were to have them as your architect on whatever site you utilize those drawings on, as well as some civil engineering for this new site as well. Because civil, obviously, sites are different, and the engineering is different site to site.
So then, then what about the engineering costs? That's separate?
I could look at that. That is a line within their contract. But yes, engineering fees are separate. We've already done all the engineering. All the engineering has gone forward for the Village of Astero, for their approvals, and their LDO, and for the traffic signaling and so forth. So all the civil engineering is done for this property and been submitted in, and, and it's permitted by South Florida Water Management, Lee County, and, and the village.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I'll let y'all finish your presentation. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Gettins.
Thank you.
Okay, two quick questions. One, you mentioned the $4 million in supplies, and you also mentioned the design that we've already paid for. So one question, one overall question is, you had mentioned at one point that if we purchased the $9 million in steel.
No, that's, that's not correct. We only purchased $4 million in steel. We revised the phase one budget estimate up $4 million to accommodate the $4 million early steel purchase.
Okay, and, and you had said previously that we haven't paid that until we get an invoice for it.
Right now, it's encumbered. We have an amendment to their contract. We, when you approve that, we immediately open a purchase order, and it becomes encumbered. So no, we haven't invoiced it yet. We're in the shop drawing process now with the steel subcontractor. So they will submit invoices through the construction manager's monthly payout for certain percentages of the work that have been completed to date.
So there's a portion of the $4 million that we would not get back, because they've already started working on it.
That is correct.
Okay.
And what that amount is, I can't tell you at this point in time until...
No, that's okay. I, I'm not asking to, to hold your feet to the fire on that one. We have talked before about, again, though, with those supplies, with that steel, and you made the statement that if we didn't use it there, we could use it at another project.
It's, if we can't get a credit back on the steel, if we can't get a full credit back on the steel, that would be my recommendation and my attempt. If we can just pay for shop drawing purposes only and get a credit back, cancel the contract, then that would be my recommendation to you. However, if the steel is purchased and we can't back out of it, I would look to see on one of my other projects, let's say J, if we could repurpose some of those items for that particular school. I, I don't want to call a vendor, because if I take a major vendor like this and I scare them and they pull me out of the production line, I could shoot myself in the foot before I even know what your official direction is.
Well, no, and I, I totally agree with you. But I'm, I'm going on what was said several months ago.
No, absolutely.
That we can still use it somewhere, and with the costs rising, it would be to our benefit to go ahead and purchase that and have it in hand.
There's, you're correct.
Or whatever else we're going to do in the future.
There is a lot of coordination between this project structural team and that other project structural team to see what, what numbers of the units, the structural steel beams and purlings and so forth, that could be repurposed for that other school. We just don't know that yet, because we haven't, up until now, we haven't known that this school may not move forward.
No, and, and I totally, I'm agreeing with you actually. And then the fact that we have the design and the prototype already, is that something that can also be used for a future school?
Correct. You, you own
So my point is, the $4 million or whatever portion of it, and the supplies that come with it, the design that we've already paid for, are two things that we won't lose our money. We will be able to use those elsewhere in the district. So if we're looking at a negative to putting a, a hold on this now, I don't see that as a negative, because we have plenty of building projects that are coming up, that we can use the supplies and use the design with some tweaks, so.
Okay, if we can, I'm gonna have, Ms. Stephen Alley, I'm gonna let you finish your short. And remember, we agreed to four and six, which we'll use that. But I'm gonna, after your question, let them finish, because I think we have five, four pages left, and then we'll go into discussion with everybody.
And, and, and so, and all due respect, I just, it made me think about this. Block Lane was initially going to be the innovative school. Now, the innovative school is at a totally different place. So I am having a hard time understanding that we didn't spend architect fees for, because the innovative school is totally different from what is actually going to happen at Three Oaks. So you, I, I'm having a hard time understanding that there was no cost there, or they just picked up and did it for free on the second one. I, people don't work for free, so I don't understand that.
Block, the whole Block Lane and Innovation School pretty much got kiboshed right out of the barn, especially when people determined that, why is it going there? So that got shut down pretty quick. There was some rough architectural rendings and, and potential site plans of a big park that they were gonna do there in conjunction with the village. That never came to fruition. The only additional charge and fees that I had to incur when the decision was made to move over to Three Oaks Parkway is we never had signalization at the other Williams site or behind Astero High School. So we had to have a signal on Three Oaks, and I had to give an increased change order to the design team of $111,200 so that they could provide for the engineering of a traffic signal at Three Oaks, which was not part of the original deal when we were over at Williams.
Okay, all right. I'll let you get on. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And then another option, option three, that you have here, is to add permanent stations, or that is to provide permanent, permanent student stations on an existing campus, or that is in addition to, or, you know, any existing campuses. So some of the strengths with this include a short-term cost efficiency, does maximize existing campuses, but some of the considerations that we have to take into related to additions is, number one, we only have, based on our planning's analysis of the buildings and the space that are out there, we have one elementary and one middle school campus that could accommodate such in addition. And then it does permanently increase the demand on other core facilities in the school. So we would have to, of course, take that into consideration. And then it also does increase that, the environmental, demand on environmental resources, and then the need to obtain associated permits related to in addition. But we would have to, you know, of course, do that anywhere we were building. So that is a consideration. Now, one of the considerations are in this option, really it does mitigate the need for Quadruple A at all, right? According to the projections that we have now, if we're going to add permanent student stations out in the zone, those permanent stations would be, at those additions, would be enough to accommodate the growth or the need in the South Zone for a significant period of time, based on the projections that we have right now. And I, I paused for just a moment to see whether Mr. Rickinbacher or Ms. Eba, if they have anything to add to that conversation.
So one thing I want to focus on here is where the capacity is available. We've identified that if we were to add a permanent building, which means that we actually have to have a more, more, more site than we would if we need portables. Portables can be used on a much smaller site. There's two campuses that would accommodate, Spring Creek Elementary and Three Oaks Middle. Partly, this is because many schools in the S2 and S3 zones have already received large permanent increases in capacity in the past. So there isn't the ability to expand those campuses further. Partly is that there's some campuses that are just small. And I just want to identify that at Spring Creek, this is one of the two campuses that we already have a current ability to accommodate additional capacity. So it may not be the best choice to add future permanent capacity.
And I would, I would like to let you be aware, right now, in order to do an addition building, you're also looking at about three years. By the time you come up with RFQs, you come up with design and physical construction time. In addition now, the county is becoming a lot more strict in the various entities with limited development orders. So let's say your typical economical 400-student addition building was to be put on a campus. We're now going to be locked in with a limited development order, which means potential for signalization, turnoff lanes, long parent stacking. I mean, we've tried to accommodate in our latest designs, and obviously, this Quadruple A was the biggest stacking lane we've ever had. It's not enough, even at Gateway High. It's, it's not enough. Unfortunately, COVID has kind of put a curveball in that mix. But we're gonna have to do a lot more than just build an addition building anymore. You're gonna be doing site improvements with that. So you're, you're looking at addition buildings that could possibly be 15 to 20 million dollars.
Okay, so what we were
I didn't hear his last statement. How much were you, the last thing you said, that we're looking at a, a certain amount?
My estimate would be somewhere between 15 and 20 by the time we are able to get this out of the box.
For the site improvements and an addition?
Correct, because you're gonna have to do a limited development order. You're gonna have to have turn-in lanes. You're gonna have to have parent stacking and capacity on-site, as well as building, the building itself. And just to give you an idea, with FFNE, I think Lehigh Senior High School addition, 20 classroom, 400 students, that was like 13 and a half million dollars. And I think we did that about two, two and a half years ago, plus or minus. So obviously, inflation isn't on there. So again, somewhere between 15 to 20 by the time this, this were to get out of the box for that type of facility.
So what we were, what we hope we were able to do today was to give you all, as we said we would when we got to phase two of any project, that we would come to you with updated information, and then ask for information related to a go or no-go on the project to move forward. So we hope that we were clear in terms of giving you information that you need to make this important decision. First of all, on our current capacity condition, and then the enrollment, or really the seat demand on a long-term basis in the South Zone, given the information that we know right now. You all know that we continuously, each year, pull this and reanalyze. But as of today, this is the best information we have related to all of the projections that have been completed. We also wanted to be clear on the options that we were giving in terms of moving forward with a Quadruple A, or if we don't move forward with Quadruple A, what some of the other options are in terms of meeting the student station need within the given area. And then being, being clear on the timeline in which we would need the decision in order to move forward appropriately, either with construction or with a different decision, if a different decision is made by the board. So we were hoping to hear some discussion today related to, first of all, whether we move forward or not with the construction of Quadruple A. And if the board determines we do not, whether you have a preferred option related to two or three that we talked about today, or if you have a potential of another option that you wanted to discuss as well. So we'll turn it over to you all for discussion.
Thank you, and I'm gonna start with Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Gettins. Ms. Patruga? No, she's on there.
I'd like to take a step back for just a minute, because I want to understand how we, I, I know you presented history, but I, I want a deeper understanding of how we got here. Because quite frankly, I've never been a fan of the process that occurred moving from Block Lane. If we look at what we have currently, we'll, we see that San Carlos Elementary was underutilized back in 2019, and underutilization is even lower right now. And we look at Three Oaks, and we see that 122% and Three Oaks has, what, eight portables, and it's about at the same rate. So my question is, what, what's going on there when we're? I want you to restore my faith in how we have looked at serving our students, because yes, it's about the money. Absolutely, it's about the money. But even more important is, we need to serve our students, and we especially need to be sure that the students who live in, let's call it the less prosperous, prosperous areas or lower socioeconomic areas are served equally, equitably to the students in the higher. So why, why is this? Why, why is this occurring? San Carlos isn't all that far from Three Oaks. What, what are the demographics and, and what's going on here?
Is, is your question saying, why is one school overutilized and the other school underutilized? Is that really what you're asking?
And it's been a trend, if you, in 2019, Three Oaks was at 122%. It currently has eight portables, and it's still at 121% even while San Carlos Elementary is now at 70%. How, how were students assigned? What? I'm, I'm looking for you to help me restore my faith in how all of this was, was looked at.
Well, the, when you say how all of this was looked at, I mean, the, the, how students are assigned are, is outside of the construction area. And the over and underutilization of the schools really is a function of the, the assignment process and a, a trend over time of, of items or schools that the parents are choosing versus not choosing. So I think that there are a lot of different considerations related to that. That is a conversation probably another day, related to, you know, and pulling in our academic services in order to understand the underlying causes and try to react to those. And I think Superintendent, I think you had something you wanted to add to that?
I really would like to hear what the superintendent
Yeah.
Has to say, because to me, and I understand it's academic services and, and how students are scheduled, and yet, we know that students are scheduled, and yet we know that students don't always get their first choice. And can, can you, can you explain how this exists? Because it does impact finances.
I'll try to give my, my best brief version of this, but essentially this is where the conversation of capacity, when you're hearing capacity from a fish capacity utilization standpoint, that's one thing. What we actually have control over, which is what we build our choice system around student enrollment, is around our program capacity. So the program capacity is where we set exactly how many seats we will open in a given school. And throughout that year, you know, students essentially will, according to that program capacity, they will enroll, they will choose schools and so forth. And so while you see that at the time, back in 2019, San Carlos, for example, was 84%, utilization in that October 19, that October 19 FTE, that number was going to be different by February 19. You know, you have a certain amount of growth that you do see throughout the year. So while we focus oftentimes on the lottery and what, and what families choose, and that's really what these utilization rates reflect, is families' choices. So what that means really, in lay terms, is families chose to fill up the program capacity at schools such as Pine Woods, Ramacy Page, and Three Oaks Elementary, so that those seats that were available, the capacity that was offered at that school, program capacity, which we set, they enrolled at that school at a much higher percentage, which would leave a school such as San Carlos at the October FTE at 84%. But that means that, so if, if students are trying to enroll in a school, the school that will have capacity throughout the year, as we do see, you know, again, this is not really, it, it's only tangentially related to this, this area, that folks will need somewhere to go throughout the year, San Carlos would be that school that's available to them. Now, student enrollment could give you a broader understanding, we could have Soretta come and explain specifically what that looks like throughout the year, but the lottery function that we engage in is really just a, a one point in time. The data that they have here, they're choosing to show, is the October session. Because we are a high-growth area in our, in our district, just in general, students come to us throughout the year, it's very typical that our February FTE, and even later, later when we move into, to April and May, we continue to see students come to our district from all different kinds of places. So if you're a school that's underutilized, San Carlos being one of them, James Stephens, I was one of those schools as well, what you open up in the beginning of the school year is a very different picture by the end of the year. You have many, many more students as that, as that year progresses. So that's just one piece of this conversation. Again, it's much deeper than all that, but it's, I just don't want to oversimplify it into one thing.
But in terms of the, sorry, just want to add to that, in terms of the construction of the school itself, though, of course, with the projections that we had at the point in time where the school was put on the plan for construction, then those projections would have showed that available seats at any school were, were filled, and then there was still additional need for additional seats after that. And so those projections are very different now from where they were at the time of the school being originally, school or schools being originally put on the plan. So I'm not sure whether that was the question you were asking as well.
I'm, I'm just seeing interesting trend, because if we look at Benita Springs Elementary School, it is a school that's overutilized. It currently has 10 portables, and the interesting comparison is the population that goes to Benita Elementary, and I'm going to put a guess out there and then ask if I'm even close, the, I, I know the, the demographics of the San Carlos area, both of those are, let's say, lower socioeconomic than in the heart of Estero, as you've just pointed out. And so I'm, I'm just, I think it, I understand the whole thing about the lottery and how things are selected, but I don't understand how, when you figure building schools and you figure projections, you're not looking very specifically at schools that are underutilized. That just doesn't make sense to me, and it's very disturbing when I see that perhaps it's schools in the lower socioeconomic areas that don't get as much traction. And that's what I have to say, and I look back.
Okay. So when you, so when you say that schools that are overutilized are not considered, I'm, I'm not sure if you could help us understand what you mean, because that was the point of, in this, you know, in, in these areas, based on our current sub-zone or, or zone configuration, in terms of determining when different schools would be built and, and how they would be built and in what configuration in order to alleviate overcrowding in any given sub-zone or zone. So all of those numbers in S2 and S3, as you see here, would have been taken into account in determining, you know, when a school would go out. So could you help us understand what you mean?
All right, I'll ask one more.
And I'm sorry, I, really, we are definitely on a time constraint.
I, I know.
And they all have four minutes for their first time, and then they'll come back again, get two more minutes.
Well, I'll just say, one more thing, since they are not understanding my question, which was done.
I understand.
Let me ask you this. Do we have great numbers of students from San Carlos Park bust into Estero, which raised the numbers at the Estero schools, which made it appear that the Estero schools were overcrowded at the same time that we have San Carlos underutilized? And I, I was done before, but-
Thank you. And I'm going to call on Ms. Gittens, please.
Okay. And thank you, and that was what I had brought up previously, that very same thing. For example, at Pine Woods, there are students that could potentially be assigned to San Carlos, and they are going to Pine Woods. And it then sets up the perception that there are more students going to one school, and all of a sudden now it's, we need a new school because it's overcrowded. My thing that I brought up before is that the location where you wanted to build this school is within three miles, 3.2 miles of San Carlos, Pine Woods, Three Oaks Elementary and Three Oaks Middle.
Athenean Charter, you missed another school.
Well, in the Charter, but just looking at, I mean, the data that I pulled was just on those four. And you had it in your presentation, that using those four, you are underutilization, you're undercapacity. And my question, kind of going along with what, was what Ms. Vaughn was saying, is that if you have a school that is 70%, it goes back to what we were talking about earlier with the grants. How do we make that school an attractor, then? How do we attract some of those overcapacity at Pine Woods to go to San Carlos? What do we do? Do we give them a grant? Do we give them a, a program that's different from the others? What is it that we can do if you've got the capacity there? And I just want to make one statement. We've discussed the merits of transparency, I'm going to read it so I'll get my two minutes. We have discussed the merits of transparency since 2018 on this board. The topic today, I'll take this down, the topic today is the epitome of transparency, transparency that has been asked for. I want to thank the staff for the go or no-go process, as a result of asking several months ago, how do we know when to cut ties and when to move forward? And I thank you for coming up with that process and this way of actually quantifying and using data, and for all the hard work that you guys have done in this. We haven't always seen eye to eye on it, but what we have seen eye to eye on is that what's most important are students. Thank, I want to thank the public for staying aware, and the superintendent for being brave enough to advocate for children, advocate for children, and the staff and the taxpayers to present this whole story. And thank you to the board for being accepting of this, this data and all data, being gracious enough to change your mind if possible, when faced with the facts and data that do represent what's best for all children in Lee County. We've already spent over 2.8 million, some of which we've heard we can recoup. I will be making a motion tomorrow to stop the project, the financing, and the focus, and to move forward to prioritize our resources in a different direction. We're not against anyone or any children, we are for all children. Thank you. And I got 26 seconds to come.
I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
Okay. Who would, any other comments? Ms. Patrico, you, if you will, please start pulling over wherever, and I will call you next.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I, I guess, okay, but I'm, we're, we're being asked to make a decision about this, well, how do I, where do I go with this? Okay, so this school is in sales tax dollars. So if we do not utilize this money, I guess what I'm looking for is what's the best utility of the sales tax dollars that we have between now and the end of the sales tax term? Is there some other way that we can most, more effectively, efficiently use that money if we choose not to build an Estero? I would like to see from the staff what our options are, not just with respect to Estero, but with respect to the county, and the respect, and, and the need pre-K to technical colleges, you know, what is the best utilization of this money in the time we have left? Because it's, it's, it's one thing to see this problem, or this situation alone, I would like to have seen it in the context of the district need overall.
If I may respond to that, just, it's a great question, and that's really how we've had been, really, ever since we submitted the initial capital plan back in June, and have come through significant cost escalations and whatnot, is that, you know, we brought this back to the board, and we were making those difficult choices of how much do you incur for their debt, understanding, you know, we have projects, the tech colleges, we've got pre-K, we've got, I mean, the innovation school partnerships, and I think it's vital to kind of use the framing that Ms. Morgan just put forward, because quite frankly, that's the reality that we're going to be faced with. We have a 10-year capital plan, which that 10-year capital plan, in the moment in time that it's done, is the best reflection of attempting to meet all the values that we have. And in an environment of today, you know, with both inflation and rising construction costs, as well as changing growth in this area with, with the increased value in real estate and the movement of peoples within this area, this is really the critical question we have to face. You know, Dr. D, I'm sure can give us some, some sense of this, because I think the project team has evaluated not just this, they were looking at exactly those questions, and I think that's probably why the project team really did put forward some of these additional concepts and recommendations, is because we have currently, we have to find ways to reduce our overall expenditure just to cover the cost of the, not just inflation, the estimates you heard from Mr. Rickenbacher, but also just the, the construction cost right now, before we, we get this GMP underway. So just, can the project team respond to some of that, some of those considerations?
Sure. I think the best way that I can respond to that is to say, well, first, it would be, we have, just to be able to fulfill the items that we currently have on the capital plan, given what we think we know and the cost escalations we're seeing, we're going to need some additional revenue to be able to do that, right? Or some additional capacity in order to be able to do that. So first is servicing what we've kind of said we were going to do on the capital plan itself. And then second, even beyond that, we have items that didn't go on the capital plan. There's always unmet need, because based on the revenue that we had and the projections that we had, there were certain things that just couldn't be funded with the, you know, based on the projections that we had. So the next level to that would be, okay, analyzing those things that aren't currently on the capital plan, if we were able to do that, right? If we had revenue that we thought was left over after we covered everything that was on the plan itself, then we would be looking for those things that didn't make the cut, so to speak, this year, and finding, can we lift some of those things up to the, you know, to be put on the plate, if we had the capacity and the, and the revenue to do so. So I don't, I don't know if you were asking for specific things, specific projects, but in general, that's kind of how the process would work.
Ken, you're going to see every project we do competing against each other. Right now, the initial estimates on Riverdale High School are way above what was initially conceived a year ago. Franklin Parks, I expect to be higher. Every project we do, you, I think you and your staff and team and everyone have to have a urgency about every project, and some of the shiny projects may have to go, be pushed back. I don't know what those shiny projects are, but you folks certainly will.
And that's in, you know, Scott, again, just mentioning the construction program, projects, the large construction projects, but again, we have tens of millions in maintenance projects, and those will be seeing the same type of cost escalations we imagine.
And, and it drives projects. So I mentioned Cypress Lake Middle earlier. That was Castaldi three years ago, that it was in a condition to be torn down. It's potentially, potentially could be pushed, and eventually we're going to have to add some new work into that building. So you're throwing good money to bad, so you have to prioritize what is a critical need and make business decisions based on those needs.
And just to add on to that, something we haven't addressed, is really the quality of our partnerships. This is really where partnerships become the essential third leg of this tool that we have not really discussed. And we talk about things such as the innovation school, our tech colleges, pre-K, these are all things that we don't do alone. And so we, it's, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that for all these projects that are joint ventures, that we're really analyzing all the costs relative to those pieces as well, because as we have to make tough decisions, the things that are very true in just the K-12 space, just needing capacity for, for, for children, some of these other issues that are very important discretionary items, we just have to really look at all those as well. So, so this is, this is a process, it's part of the reason why I'm very happy we have a new competitive plan that we address every single year in terms of our competing priorities, because as, as Scott said, as well as Amy, these projects are always competing against themselves because of the limited dollars we have. But I, but one thing to be very clear, we could not do any of it, not to the extent that we would like, if it were not for the sales tax. The sales tax gives us that ability to even have these choices, to make these, these, these difficult decisions. So, you know, that's something that really bears mentioning as well.
Thank goodness for it. Ms. Morgan, I hope we answered your question appropriately.
Yes, I mean, in a general sense, you did. Thank you, Dr. Decimore.
Thank you. Ms. Patrico, are you ready? And then Ms. Fisher, I'll come right to you. Ms. Patrico?
I am.
Okay, you have your four minutes.
Okay, so Table 2B on page two of the memo is pretty self-explanatory to me. I have to ask a difficult question, and please understand that I'm not accusing anybody in this question. Instead, I'm addressing a narrative that is sort of out there in the public right now. So sort of addressing the elephant in the room, let's put it that way. Were the historical numbers that were submitted to the state when we received approval to build Quadruple A manipulated? Were they real numbers, or was the data manipulated to make it seem that there was a need for the school when in fact the need never existed?
I mean, was based on the projections and the capacity at that time. And what we hope we showed today is that the market in Estero today is a very different place than the market was, in Estero was. And the housing costs in Estero have gone up significantly. And so, no, we did not manipulate, and this is prior to the current, and, and none of the planning team today was here when that happened, but I'm sure that that data was based on the, the capacity and projection data that was available to them, the best available data that they had at that time. And when you look at the market considerations that David Cates has identified for us, you can see that it, it's been a very quick turnaround for the market conditions in that area. So what was in the past is not what is today, and that's why we evaluate these numbers every year. It's why we have a process like this, where we can go back and reevaluate and redetermine what the best decision is before we, we commit something. It's why we do what we do always. Projections are as good as projections are, but it's, it's when you actually assess the data at the time that something is happening that you really determine what should move forward.
I, I think there might be a-
I, I think there might be, I think there might be a question within that question. Originally, when we were at Block Lane, it was two schools for a volume of 2,300 students. And then the decision was made to, to do a pre-K eight and the volume of students went down to 1,800 with a future 10-year capacity of maybe 23. So I think there was a noticeable, now whether it was for program or population, there was a noticeable decrease in required seats. And I think potentially the market and that area subsequently added to those decreases maybe.
Ms. Patrico, do you have anything, any other thing?
The approval by the DOE to build a school or to, the approval of a DOE of a construction project is kind of a test for me. And I do see it as an inefficiency and a waste of taxpayer dollars to build a school. State would not approve it based on current plant survey data. So my question for you is, if we were to submit our plant survey to the DOE today, would we receive state approval to build Quadruple A?
No. We would not receive permission today to build that school. We just don't, I mean, so the way our district is evaluated is not based on an individual school, it's based on school attendance zones and Lee County is unique in the state in that our school attendance zones are based on a choice system. So it's not just the school in question, it's the school, it's the school zone as a whole. In this case, we're looking at S2 and S3. And the capacities, as, as Mr. De Guzman has, have shown, we are at or slightly over capacity at both the elementary and middle school level when you look at all schools and the attendance zones in consideration. And therefore, it's my opinion that the state would not give us, give us approval today. However, that would have to be tested against the state. So I don't believe it would be, but you know, that's, that's, that's a decision for the state, not for me.
Ms. Patrico, anything else?
Okay, so, yeah, you're going to have to come back to me and cut me off when my time is up.
Oh, I will.
So we did, when I was out giving presentations on the half penny sales tax, we did promise taxpayers an elementary and a middle school in the South Zone. So what I'm hearing you all say is that this is not a never project. This is a, we will reevaluate annually to determine when and if the capacity reaches the point where the building of a school becomes necessary. Is that true?
Yes. That, yes, that, that would be true, just like we, you know, do for every area as long as, again, that option three, which is those permanent student stations will put a different look on it, right? Because at that point, it would seem, based on our projections, that we would have satisfied the need for a long-term period of time. But if that's not the case, then yes, it would be a, let's see in the future when those growth numbers catch up to the point where we would need that, yes.
Okay, another question. Has ISOC been consulted? Have other advisory committees who previously approved the building of this school been presented with its information? I assume they have, because you're going to come to the board first, but will you be going to the, those committees with new updated capacity setup?
We would update them on the information of whether the project was on the slate or not, but just to be, just to, just to clarify, the ISOC doesn't approve or disapprove any project. What they'll do is attest to the fact that a project that we have slated for use of sales tax funding meets the criteria that we shared with the community.
Okay, and in terms of sort of community buy-in, there's significant investment of time and support for the building of the school. So as I go out into the community following this meeting, I wonder how I can get my hands on some data or some slides to help the Astero Village Council understand these changes, the ECL understand these changes, Realtors, other groups who have really come in support of this project, and, and also whether staff could be utilized for those presentations and those communications.
I would just say, you know, really the best, the quickest story is it's, it's slower growth. So the slower growth due to what I think probably everyone has viewed, which is the rising real estate costs, that, that change, it was already a slow growth area, it slowed. The system reflects that, that change. I want to caution people against that option three concept of building up expansions onto other schools down there. The main reason is because, you know, when you have core facilities that are, are limited and you just add these schools and make them bigger and bigger, that's a real concern. And temporary, and portables, as we know, are a temporary solution. They should not be a permanent solution. So I think the idea is, you know, do you take on a school now at an increased cost, knowing that your current growth is stalled, knowing that you, if you were to do that, then you would forcibly not have to build a school down there for quite some time if you were to stay the course. You are doing so at a much more expensive point right now, which is important, and it's, it's important to make that decision eyes wide open, that it's more expensive. You'd be bringing back a high, very high total cost per student station in terms of that guaranteed maximum price that you saw the estimates. But if you were to wait a year and the inflation continues to add to it, or two years or three years, it may very well be more expensive. It may be very expensive for all of them. So it's really just about putting all the important variables in front of people for them to react to that. I think the project team, I don't want to speak for the whole team, but we probably have mixed opinions about what to do on this particular project. Some folks would say, we have other really far more pressing priorities we have to take care of right now. And others would say, you know, this just makes sense. You don't have that many schools down in this area, you have some underutilization, but you certainly have a lot of schools that are, are pretty crowded and a lot of portables down there. And so I think it's a very difficult decision, but that's why this information is being brought forward to the board. And I think that would be part of the story I would convey to the community.
You have 15 seconds, Ms. Patrico.
Okay, well, I'll wait for my next two minutes because that's probably about as much time as I have left for questions and comments.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. If any information Dr. Savage is disseminated to any of the board members with regards to this project, PowerPoints, any type of information, please ensure that it goes to all seven members. And if there is going to be a discussion in any of the community forums down in the South Zone, please ensure that all board members are aware and if they would like to attend, they can attend. Obviously, board members, you cannot engage in any of the discussion, you can just observe. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to Ms. Fisher, because it was Ms. Fisher's turn, and then Ms. G.
Thank you. So, excuse my back, everyone. So I was making some notes and I heard the mention of adding permanent stations versus portables, which seems to make sense because of the depreciation of the portables and potential property value growth at the existing schools where we might make additions. But then there were some other considerations regarding the support of that addition at those campuses. So it's really a difficult decision to make and I, I had written down something about the state approval and the state standards, and I think you answered it when Ms. Patrico asked her question. But, so when we look at the utilization and we're proposing this in our plan, how are the new state standards going to impact that regarding the capacity? And then what is the likelihood that state approval might be impeded at certain steps? Especially if, and I don't want to go too fast, maybe, maybe I'll stop there and then ask my next question after.
So the state, when, we will be opening up our next five-year plant survey this fall, or this, yeah, this fall. And we will have one year. So we'll go from June to June 22 to 23 with our next plant survey or thereabouts. When the state does these assessments, it's based on our COFTI numbers at the time that we open our survey. So the COFTI numbers that will come out this summer will be used as the foundation for us to develop our next five-year plant survey. The way that we determine how to use our campuses for, for our, for the allocation of that COFTI projection, and that's the five-year projection, would be impacted by whether or not the school was built and the excess capacity that would be here or at any campus. Every, every, every campus student station that we have currently built will be included in the calculation of how we will be meeting our future projections. Joel, did you have anything to add to that? So, does that answer your question?
It does. So then I heard mention of if we took, I think this was Scott, if we took what we've invested, potentially we could maybe use that, the drawings and some of the materials in another zone of need. So then how do we determine that and how do we accommodate the state requirements? You know, I, I, because I understand fish capacity is something different than program capacity. And, and I've been in schools where people say, well, yeah, we're under capacity, but we're doing this with this smaller number of more needy students to comply with other laws and it looks like we are underutilized, but actually, program-wise and education efficiency-wise, we're not. So does that?
This is, and this way, this, it's a story, but it's a, it's a little bit of a tricky story to tell. And so I think one really important consideration that is addressed within that plant survey, the conversation of what Ms. Eba just stated, is the portables. The significant number of portables that we currently have across the whole district, but more pronounced in the East Zone. Many of those portables on this upcoming plant survey, once it grows, will come off of us. So that actually takes what is currently viewed as is permanent capacity and that goes way down when those portables disappear. Now, they're still there for all intents and purposes, program-wise, we can use them. However, they no longer count against us. So that's very important to know, but it's also why we have so many schools scheduled to be built in the East Zone. Because we know that that, those portables are coming off. We didn't wait for them to come off our rolls, we already put them in the plan as evidenced by this most recent capital plan, the significant new additions of schools we're putting out there. So absolutely, I allow the project team to kind of speak to this idea of if you were to take the work that's been done and try to shift, whether it's the structural steel that you have contracted, that, sorry about that, that's why I'm, that's my cue to stop talking, let the team go.
So one thing I want to build on what Dr. Savage just mentioned is that if you looked at the plant survey that we are using right now, the 2017 plant survey, it does not account, it, it counts for all of these portables that will age out in this next one. So that, those capacity numbers will come down based on the portables that we are allowed to, and it's not all of them, but it's a good significant portion of them that we are allowed to pull off of our current rolls. And so long as those portables are maintained to what the state calls a satisfactory condition, we will be able to continue to use those portables in areas as we deem appropriate. So that is, that is important to understand in terms of the plant survey and, and how all of this works. Your, your, the state will tell us where our portables and whether, where other student stations are, and then we calculate what we need. The other thing I want to identify is that there are a number of schools in our current tenure plan that are not in our plant survey and have yet to be plant survey approved, but will be done in this next five-year plant survey.
Thank you very much. That helps a lot. Thank you.
Ms. Jivinelli?
So I have a lot of, a lot of questions, but, so I'm a little confused with talking about the, the projection because I'm a realtor, so I know that the Benita and Astero area, mostly Astero, has always, the average rate since, and I pulled some demographics on that, since 2015, the average age is 60 years old. So, and that hasn't changed. As of 2019, it was 61. So none of those people are having babies. So I don't know how we're going to fill the classrooms with their, their children, maybe grandchildren if they come to visit. So that's my first concern. My second concern is, you know, how we got here. And I know nobody wants to talk about that because that's a big elephant in the room, but I can't sit back and, and, and Ms. Morgan said it eloquently though, I'd like to see them, I can't sit back and watch students because at the end of the day, this is hurting children that where the need is. We need to be building where the need is. So that's my biggest concern. I think, from what I'm looking here, the need is more Benita. I, I think the school, we need to be looking at the numbers in Benita. I think that the average age there is going to be a lot younger. And so that's my first concern. Second, the East Zone, we, we, that's a little bit of a broken record, so we know the need is there as well. So my concern is how we got here. We purchased land to, at this point. I had a question for the superintendent when he gets back from his break, I'll ask that. But, and I'll try to talk fast because I know we're running out of time. But, you know, we bought land to build on Block Lane. And then that, we didn't even vote to move to Three Oaks. I didn't even give, I even said to the consensus, I wasn't going to go to Three Oaks because we had that property listed for sale. In 2017, Mr. Mora and Don Huff gave us a great presentation of what we should be selling and keeping. And that was to sell because of the, the land on Three Oaks was not even suitable for a school. So it's costing us more, more money to make something happen and force it and then, then actually where, where, where the need is. The need wasn't, in 2017 was not at Three Oaks Parkway. So we went and purchased that Block Lane. My other concern is now where I think that some of the need is in Benita is, is we sold property or split property off in Tower Road. I think we need to see if we can get, and this was a question for the superintendent, so hopefully he's watching where he's at, that we can salvage that Tower Road contract and keep it because I think that's where the school is needed. And when Ms. Huff and Mr. Mora gave us that presentation in 2017, they were clear that we could build on Tower Road. I don't know when that went out the window, but I, as I stated back a few months back, land is valuable and we shouldn't be selling it, splitting it off, we need to be keeping what we can use. That's why I didn't want to give up the property that was in front of the South Zone bus area on Daniel's Parkway. So, you know, I, I feel like it fell on deaf ears and now we're in a situation where we've jumped, abandoned one property, go to another, now we're going to abandon that, now where are we going to go? I don't think the vision has been clear and that is so important because at the end of the day, if we're not building where the need is, then who is it affected? It's affected our children. And that, and now we're, this is kicking that can again. I, I, I feel like we do this a lot, is kicking that can and the can is in our face and we need to deal with it regardless of how, what happened and we need to deal with it now immediately so that we're not kicking it down the road. We're building where the need is because the need is still great, it's not going to go away. I'm sorry.
I know, you're four.
I just, there's so much because, you know, how did we get here? That's my concern. I don't want to get here again and that's, that's what I have. So the average age is 60 years old in Astero, so I, I don't think the need is there. I will not be supporting building a school in Astero. I think we need to really look at the, at where the need is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jivinelli. I'm going to, everybody, well, the only thing, well, I've listened to every, everyone else's comments, so, and I had the opportunity to speak to Mr., some of them prior to this. And I guess my only questions were, the staging for Cypress, I thought was, was a great ideal because cost versus building for portables, did we have land in the East Zones to build? And I was told, yes, we have two different sites. And that a lot of the kids from the South Astero area go to school down in Edison Park and different areas over here. So I know that we are, kids are going different places. So that's my comments on that one. I'm going to go back around for a second time. I know we did have a hard stop today at 2:00 because our kids are being presented with something over at Fort Myers and it was good for us to all be there. So I just wanted to keep everybody in mind of that as well. And I'm going back around for a second, which is two minutes. Kids.
Okay. Mine is, mine is quick. I think I've read my statement earlier. I, something that just jumps out at me though, I've asked on several occasions with the cost of Quadruple A, how much of it was tax money and how much was capital? And each time I asked that, I was told that we didn't know yet, that we had to, you know, do other things. And I guess I was guess I was a little surprised then, when two of my colleagues once said this school was a sales tax school. And then when Ms. Patrica said that, when we did the sales tax presentations, we promised the South Zone a middle and elementary school. That's just a little outside of what I was thinking had happened. Because I was told that the sales tax, the purpose of it, was to have money to build in areas that we didn't have the money for. And that's a totally different thing to say in public, that the South Zone was promised a middle and an elementary school. And if, if that's, you know, not the way it was meant to come out, it, it really does not help the other zones, because I thought it was one pot of money, the tax, sales tax money. And there, we go back to priorities and, and resources. Did we say we have this pot of money, so let's look at how we're going to spend it? Or did we start out with, we promised, if you pass the tax, then we'll do this? So perception is kind of strange, looking at that. But again, I've read my statement. You know where I stand on this.
May I help with a little clarification to some of that? Okay. So, it, so you're right, with the, with the funding of the different schools, it's not necessarily set up to know exactly how much is going to be funded for, you know, the debt service that we take out for any particular school, until we get to that particular year. But we do know that it, it will be a mix. There will be some sales tax money that's used on the building of our new schools, in addition to maybe impact fees, in addition to maybe property tax funds. At the, at the onset of the, the sales tax, when we put together information about what we were going to potentially spend that money on, the categories that we were going to spend that money on, part of that information was the schools that we currently had on the slate, or that we were projecting we needed at that point in time, in order to say, these are possibilities for sales tax funding. And those schools in the South were ones, along with a bunch of others, mostly in the East Zone, because that's where the growth was. And so that came from that information that we put together that said, hey, these are the schools that we believe that we need, because one of the major focus or concerns for the sales tax was growth.
Right. And I totally understand that. What I'm saying, the mixed message, though, is if in 2017, 18, we knew that growth was slowing, and that we may not have the need, then to start out in 2019 with the first, you know, portion of the sales tax going to an area where a board member clearly said that, you know, this is what was stated. So I, it's just kind of a mullit, but...
Yeah, understood. Yeah, understood. I know what you're saying. But I do want to point out that it wasn't the first portion of, because we had, have already done the addition at Lehigh Senior, the building of Gateway, and the opening of Middle School MM. So I just wanted to point that out, that it wasn't the first. But I do, I get you. I just wanted to clarify.
Same. Okay. I'm just going by what was stated. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Morgan, do you have it?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Just real briefly, I heard two of my colleagues say, you know, where, how did we get here? And I think if we look at the history, we kind of know that. And I think there's been a big effort to improve processes and to add to our, our surveys and our considerations on, on, on the utilization of our buildings and the growth. And I think that we have had some unexpected situations, like the big increase in homes, which does increase our property tax income. And I think we ended up getting more out of the sales tax than we anticipated because of COVID and everything. So it, it's been like some unexpected stuff. And my question would be, rather than how did we get here, is where do we go from here? And how do we move forward in making sure that we are maintaining transparency, that we are utilizing our resources to the maximum potential, and that we are meeting the needs of the kids in, in the highest need areas?
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you.
Ms. Jivinelli? I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn. I'll connect you.
Yeah. When, when I said, how did we get here, you, you do have to remember that I was not, a lot, several of us were not on the board in 2017. The other thing is, looking at it, although I know a significant part of the history, what you have to look at, from my perspective, is that you have areas like, you have areas like Astero, the Astero Council, and they're great advocates for the village and for amenities and, and all of that. And that's great. I mean, I taught at Astero High School. They are wonderful in, in that regard. But as a school district, even though we love how supportive they've been, and all the things that go along with that, and we have other partners, for instance, FGCU, bottom line is, who's paying the bill? We, as a school district, are paying the bill. And as much as we want to be cooperative with partners, partner means two-way street. And I think the other problem is, you have areas like Lehigh, unincorporated. There's not the advocacy in some of our areas that we have, that we have in others. Personally, I question how we got here. There, it seems like from day one, even before I got on the board, just following along, there's, there's been this, almost a shroud over what was happening in Astero. And Ms. Jivinelli brought that up, so I won't reiterate that. But I agree with things that my colleagues have said. I agree with Ms. Jivinelli. I'm not going to be supporting it. I agree with the things that Ms. Kittens has said. And of course, what Ms. Fisher said, how, where do we go from here? Do we throw more money at something, or do we cut our losses or put it down? I'm, I'm not supporting it in Astero.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Jivinelli?
Okay, thank you. So, I have a couple concerns. We never actually voted, and this is something I brought up to the, to the board attorney, we've never actually voted to even move from Block to Three Oaks. We didn't take a vote, which denied the public the opportunity to have their input. So that is my biggest concern. You talked about processes, but that's one we totally eliminated. And I don't believe that was the right thing to do. It definitely wasn't transparent. I would ask the superintendent to look back at the Tower Road deal and see if we can keep that property and that contract, because I believe we need to keep that land, because I believe that's where our next school should be. Can that, can that happen? Second, I'm going to challenge, put this back on Dr. Savage and the district, to make your recommendation on what you feel is best, options two or three, or something even better than that, to be able to go forward. And where do you think, how we can go forward? I think that would be a start for me. I won't be supporting building the school there in Astero. Obviously, the numbers are not there. So that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. So, just a couple comments. I understand that there's been a decrease in the population at some of the schools. And I'm glad to hear that we will be revisiting those numbers on an annual basis, because I do think COVID probably impacted those schools and the decrease in population. The other thing is, just to provide some clarification regarding, when I said a, an elementary and middle school were promised in the South Zone, if you look at Exhibit A, that was attached to the referendum and the resolution that the board passed for the use of the half penny sales tax dollars, that's what I mean by a, an elementary, middle school was promised in the South Zone. They are right there, like, you know, written down as a project on the referendum project list. So, you know, staff asked us for guidance and direction on how to move forward. I don't think we can justify building this school right now in Astero. But at the same time, and I know that there is some disagreement on the board regarding portables, when I was, again, I was presenting to the public on the need for the half penny sales tax, the increased need for the use of portables was a factor that hit home with many voters. So we did promise to build schools, rather than place more portables on campuses. Now that I look at option two, I'm very uncomfortable with the idea of putting more portables on campuses. Instead, I'd like to ask staff to figure out what we can do to increase the popularity or the choice factor for parents at those two underutilized schools in these subzones. Some of it reputational. So, you know, I remember when I chose to send my oldest to Benita Middle, and the mayor had not yet sort of worked her magic at that school and, and turned it around, thus positively impacting the reputation of that school. I mean, I knew she was there, and I knew what was happening at that school. But I'm a board member, so I'm going to, of course, know those things before the general public will. I also remember, you know, when I was moving my family down here nine years ago, I called the principal at San Carlos, Three Oaks Elementary and Pinewood Elementary to ask questions about what...
Patrica, your time is, is just about up. Can you...
And the principal at San Carlos Park, which was a different principal than the one we have now, but she said, you don't want to send your kids here. And that was shocking to me then, and even more shocking to me now, that I'm on the school board to find out how these things work.
Ms. Patrica?
Yeah.
Ms. Patrica, just one second. The chair is trying to get your attention.
I just wanted you to wrap it up. Your time is up.
Okay. So my last question for the superintendent, I guess, and the staff, is could we have some information regarding revenue projection conferences? I understand that the state is projecting robust revenues, which will, of course, impact our projections for half penny sales tax revenues. So I believe that's peripherally related to the conversation we're having today. And whether you want to produce a white paper or give that information in a board update, I'd really appreciate the benefit of staff's projections for half penny sales tax revenue.
I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica. I have to make sure that everybody has the same amount of time. Could, could you please shoot it, shoot him an email on what you were speaking on?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it? To make sure that they have clarification.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Dr. Savage, this decision by the board will be coming to them during an action meeting, one way or another, right?
Yes. I believe it was scheduled for the very beginning of December, the December at last action meeting we have. That was our kind of critical time period. We just wanted to make sure we brought this information and wanted to get, what additional information would you as a board need to feel confident to make that decision by that time period? That, that was our intention. I mean, we wanted to bring as much as we had now, but we also wanted to hear, is there additional information that you need? And certainly, that's an example of what we just heard, the revenue projection side. I don't know that we'll be able to, I mean, Dr. Desmore, in terms of the revenue adjustments and whatnot, do you have any comment on that?
Uh, no, other than that, that's, that's fine. Well, we can work on that and bring that forward for a new discussion. So that's no problem. And as far as the timeline, yes, that's right, that no later than December 7th, unless the board takes another action before then, which of course you are at liberty to do.
Correct. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We will move on to our next, which is proximity.
Could I just ask one thing of the board, as a personal favor? We have the architectural design team, Harvard Jolly here, Suffolk Construction as well. They've put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into the design in this project. And I can see that potentially this project may go a certain way. I would like, if possible, and legally possible, in the future, if you were to use pre-K8 in the East Zone for a need, that you would consider rolling these contracts onto that new site. We, these guys worked. Originally, this school wasn't going to be till '24. And because of the need, I was asked to assemble the team and push this and get '23. And these people have poured, poured their heart and soul in there. So I think if there's any consideration legally, that that could occur sometime, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. And I, do you have something?
Mr. Rechenbacher, that's something that we'll have to look into from a legal standpoint, because of the procurement process and the bidding process. So I don't want to say yea or nay, but we'll take that into consideration and look at the legal statutes.
That's all I ask. Thank you.
And I, and I would like to say, thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate all of your hard work, always, and appreciate you being here today. And Ms. Kittens, I'm going to let you say something real quick.
Well, just really quickly, that's why I asked the question previously. If they did the work and prepared a school that can be used elsewhere, then, you know, we're not saying adios. Keep it in the file until we, you know, you're able to present it, as the attorney said, at another opportunity. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scott, for bringing that to our attention. I had no idea who you were out there.
Madam Chair, you have allotted 60 minutes for the proximity plan. It is now 1:46, and I know that you had a hard stop at 2:00.
Can we say thank you to the team that was up there, you guys?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you going to be coming back?
Can we, can we break for, just take a quick break for three minutes, please?
Well, and a recess for three minutes?
Recession for three minutes, please. Okay. Thank you for allowing us that quick recess. At this time, Dr. Savage has something to say?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would just request that I would pull this item, and I'll have this rescheduled for upcoming different briefing or workshop, depending on the nature of how we modify this.